Now I'll call this meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order.
I'd like to call out Lake County Board of Commissioners' workshop meeting to order. And first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. We contain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All our favorite emotions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming. It's a pleasure to have the city of Jacksonville and the council to come to the table today and talk about issues that was mutual concern to both of us. And we hope that we have a productive meeting and I hope we'll be able to continue our relationship working together. Thank you all for coming today and taking your time out. I think we have some presentations now for Facility-Based Crisis Center. Mr. Cotton, you bring us up to speed on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mayor Phillips, City Council. We'll briefly give an overview of where we stand and would like to give a historical perspective. So back in January of seventeen, the Commissioners at a retreat identified the opioid crisis as something that needed to be addressed, as well as City of Jacksonville Council identified that. In February, acting very quickly in seventeen, a joint city-county task force was created. In June of seventeen, through Senator Brown, we were able to obtain a $2 million grant for the outfit and renovation of an existing facility. So in March of eighteen, an inter-local agreement was signed. It included the partners of the City of Jacksonville, Corso County, Trillium, Carteret County, Craven County, Craven Healthcare, and Onslow Memorial Hospital. In August of last year, the Crisis Center provider was selected, that is Recovery Innovations International. And this past December, a certificate of occupancy was obtained. So the inter-local agreement, just some outlines for that. There's a commitment to collaborate between the provider and all of the partners. There's, of course, the financial commitment of all of the partners. There is an advisory committee membership, essentially the electeds from all of the identified entities. And then the role of the advisory committee. So it's still a very involved partnership with Onslow County, Jacksonville, Carteret, and all of the other partners with the primary care provider. So what are some next steps? This month, the Division of Health Services regulations conducted an inspection. The furniture arrived. The building has been turned over to the crisis provider to start stand-up. And we will be appointing the advisory committee members here shortly. What we're looking forward to is February of this year. The ribbon cutting is currently slated for February fifteenth at 10:00 a.m. The facility should be operational March first. The only reason that it has been delayed is the inspection or the inspector found one thing that he would like added, and we couldn't do that immediately while he was there, which was at a person gate out of the back gated area. So kind of flew through that. But if there are any questions, that's essentially where we stand. We look to be operational March first. That is the goal.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton.
Yes, sir.
When will we be sending out the notice of invitation for that?
Tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest.
We have another dedication that same day, I think, courthouse is.
Yes, sir, nine o'clock.
Dedicated the same day on Ann Street.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'd certainly like to commend the two city council members and two county commissioners who spent many, many hours. I think all together, there were probably, let's just say, twenty to twenty-five meetings that occurred. Most of the meetings were actually here at the county facility. And those meetings usually lasted anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours. Mr. Knapp, Mr. Price represented the county. Mrs. Lozera and Mr. Thomas represented the city. And I can tell you that the city police department, especially the Director of Public Safety, Mike Inara, is extremely pleased that this facility is coming online. As David has said, it's been a team effort. We were fortunate to get money from Representative, I'm sorry, sorry about that, Senator. Senator Brown. And working together, I think this is going to prove to be a success. Any members of the task force want to add to that?
I agree with you a hundred percent, Dr. Woodruff. I mean, this has been a long-term process. And to be able to see something come to fruition and to have the city working with us, with the county, and then the other, you know, aline counties and some private enterprises too, this is a huge step for Onslow County. I'll say it again. You know, is it going to solve our problems? No, it's a Band-Aid, but it's a Band-Aid that's necessary. It's something that we should have pursued years ago when we first abandoned this project. And I think it's going to serve the community well. And I tell you, I'm so excited, I can't stand beside myself. I mean, it's really heartwarming to know that people care out there and they want to give the money and they want to put their time and effort into this project. And of course, Sherry Slater's not here. Her and David worked relentlessly on this to get this moving and put a lot of time and effort. And it wouldn't have been done without their cooperation and their effort. So I just want to thank the city council as well for, you know, wanting to join us and partake in this, and specifically Mike, because we shared the same idea, the same passion. So I look forward to seeing everybody on the fifteenth of February.
Just to interject something real quickly. For people that are viewing, may view this meeting tonight and have no idea what you're talking about, would you tell us a little bit about what this Crisis Center will do?
Okay, basically, it's going to be, it's been renamed DCIC. It's going to be the Dick's Crisis Intervention Center. And basically, it's a treatment facility, it's a temporary treatment facility to handle acute care for opioid or alcohol addiction and some mental health crisis too, so we can get them stabilized, identified, and subsequently identify those individuals for either outpatient treatment or long-term treatment. Now, the next step for long-term treatment is to another facility that can house these individuals for a lot longer than we can, because we're up to about seven days that we can house these individuals. We have a sixteen-bed facility with a provider coming in. And we had this service back in 2012, and it was abandoned, and it's been vacant. And we were very fortunate enough to have a building that was still there that we could renovate and due to the capital funds that we received from the grant money from Senator Brown. So everything kind of fell into place. And I think it's going to serve the committee or the community, or actually several communities in a remarkable way, to get them identified, get them treated, and at least pushed in the right direction where they can get further long-term care.
And we know that this will take a lot of pressure off the law enforcement agencies as well as the hospital as far as, you know, how we can help these people.
Yeah, and that's something I feel, and I forgot to mention, that's a good point, Mayor. And a lot of times, a police officer is taken away from their beats or their assignments or their precincts because they have to tend to some of these individuals that are suffering from an overdose or suffering some type of mental stress. It takes an officer or deputy off the streets for about three to four hours, five hours maybe. This way, they will have a facility where they can drop them off. These individuals can be assessed, and then a deputy or the police officer can return to their job where they primarily should be. So it's definitely going to free up some time and help the Sheriff's Department out and the Police Department out tremendously. So, and again, this is a cooperative effort all around, and I just can't say enough about it.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
And Mayor, one of the unique things about what we're doing here that is unique to us is we're actually forming a oversight committee that has set up a set of objectives that the provider will have to meet. And so our job is to ensure that all the matrices that we put before them are met by them in terms of recidivism and follow-up care and the drop-off of, you know, the amount of time that it takes for a public safety officer to drop somebody off so that they're not there for two or three hours. So we've established a great deal of criteria that they will have to meet. And that is uncommon around other facilities. So we hope that this will set a model and a standard in other areas that hasn't been done before.
Well, and the follow-on to that too is another thing that I, and you just reminded me, a question that I get all the time from citizens or constituents is how much money is this costing the taxpayer? Well, from the Onslow County side, I can tell you absolutely zero. Because everything that we receive, we already had our money allocated out to Trillium to begin with, and now we're redirecting it back into our facility so that we can have an accountability of where our funds are being spent. Before that, we didn't know. We give them the money, they spend it on their programs that they're responsible for, their catchment area. Now we know exactly where our funds are going. It's going to the facility. And plus with the grant money, and I think we came under $2 million as well, as far as reconstruction is concerned and renovating the place, we have that money to just take a facility that we already had existing that belonged to the county and just to renovate it with free grant money. So it didn't cost citizens anything. And to me, that's an added bonus to that. It's a big, big, big win for everybody that's involved.
And for the city, I think where we gain is, you know, obviously, we're contributing, but where we gain is in the offset of taxpayer dollars.
Exactly.
In terms of public safety people having to sit there waiting for someone. I think we estimated it costs the city a million dollars a year for that to happen and pay. So we believe those efficiencies will more than pay for themselves. And the other part is the 23-hour facility that we hope to open, which is also renovated, which is in the front of that Crisis Center.
Exactly.
So it's two buildings. The back building will be the seven-day facility, Crisis Center, and the front, we hope to open up in the near future as a 23-hour facility for short-term care. So we're very excited about it. It's a great partnership, and I think you will see others in the state emulate. We've already been asked about how we're doing, what we're doing, and how we're executing that. So that's where we are. We're very excited about this opportunity. And it's long overdue. And the last point is, it's a beautiful facility.
It is.
No one should be ashamed to get care there, and that's the most important part. We need to ensure that people are treated with dignity and care, and they'll be able to have that there.
One of the other points too is the education training of the officers. You know, Chief Inara came to the college, and the college has been very instrumental in the CIT training, which is Crisis Intervention. Now we've got the Mental Health First Aid.
That's right.
That we're teaching. So we've done, I think, the numbers the other day were like 260-some officers with the CIT and 140-some we've done so far with the Mental Health First Aid. So the big piece of that education, so our officers aren't there long enough, they know how to get in and get out.
And if we could just expand this beyond law enforcement just a little bit, our hospital, it's costing our hospital an estimated $20,000 a month to sit with people. So it's going to be a savings for our hospital as well as our law enforcement and our citizens.
It's definitely going to free up beds for the hospitals. And plus, it's right next to the hospital. It's in the same facility right there, right next to the emergency room at the hospital, so it's an ideal location.
That's why Carteret County was part of the Trillium, they sit on the Trillium Board also. Their law enforcement agency was partnering with us before when we had the Detox Center, and then it went away in 2006, I think it went away, 2008 timeframe. But anyway, Carteret County was eager to partner with us on the maintenance and operation of that. And also Carteret General Hospital, because they faced with the same thing with overrun of patients that need that care. They just can't give that care other than just to sit with them. And that's why they were eager to contribute to the operational cost of the Crisis Center. The operational cost, I was given that number back in 2008, was going to be around $1.8 million per year, that's the operation cost. With the $500,000 we're getting from the county, from Onslow County, that we were giving to Trillium, $300-some thousand from Carteret County, and then the city's contribution and Craven County contribution, it all mounts up to the amount of money needed to do the operation on it. So it's a win-win for everybody, and it puts our law enforcement officers back on the street where they belong. And it also gets the people that needs help, help they need temporarily, and then they can get them into contact. So.
It's going to create a lot of efficiencies.
Right.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And it's going to create some, help create some solution to the problem, that's a serious problem in our communities.
At least give some direction and guidance.
And one last point is also the public safety folks will be able to facilitate the diversion programs that they've been talking about for first-time offenders and I guess those that qualify, that instead of having to take someone to jail, they can go get help early on. And that's a positive as well. So thank you for the opportunity.
Joint Land Use Study, Ben Warren.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Our Joint Land Use Study process began in May of 2018, and this is really the first update we've had to the Joint Land Use Study since 2003. And for the viewing public, just some background information, a Joint Land Use Study is basically a process for our local bases and our local community to come together to talk about the areas really immediately adjacent to the base, to talk about compatibility, excuse me, compatibility of land uses. And so we look at various themes, some instances of things that came out of the 2003 Joint Land Use Study would be the establishment of our flight path overlay districts. And with that, it really helps protect the departure and approach zones of our military aircraft. On the opposite side of the fence, we also look to ensure that the property values and property rights for our citizens are also protected. Want to make sure that we're not citing subdivisions or other developments close to train ranges or areas that may have some type of noise or other issues that would negatively affect those properties. So we started this process in May of last year. Over the summer, there was a series of various workshops, there were various meetings, stakeholder interviews, and also meetings of our technical working group and our policy committee. And the consultant really gathered information from those interviews, those meetings, also analyzed all of our local ordinances and land use plans, conducted a lot of field research, and began taking that information to compile and to develop a compatibility analysis. That was about the time that Hurricane Florence came into town, and so we had a rather significant delay between September and November with the project. Towards the end of November, we came back together with our technical working group and met with our consultant to review the compatibility analysis, which is basically a summary of the information that he had gathered from review of our ordinances in those various meetings and interviews. And following that, our technical working group came back together as a group and really came together with another series of recommendations to provide back to the consultant to ensure that the document contained or addressed many of the concerns that we had. And so right now, kind of where we are in the process, is taking the suggestions of the technical working group, incorporating those into the draft documents, and then holding a policy committee meeting in the coming weeks to review that document, to make sure that everyone is satisfied that we've captured and addressed most of the issues that we know about within the community. Once that occurs, the consultant will take that information and begin drafting some of the draft recommendations. And then once that occurs, we'll begin having a series of meetings between the various working groups with our board of commissioners, city council, different ones to review the recommendations, to ensure that they sufficiently address the concerns that we may have and also are consistent with the feedback that we received from the community. Once that occurs, really the final steps would be to bring it back to individual communities for local adoption, and our anticipated timeframe for that would be June of this year. Between now and June, we do have a lot of work to do. I said we are really just at that point of reviewing the information, making sure we have everything that we need for the consultant to begin drafting those recommendations. But I think based off the work that, or the information that was put forth by our technical working group, we're very confident that those issues are included in the document at this point. And I'll be more than happy to address any questions that other boards have.
Well, you know, a lot of people ask me, said, "Why are we doing this study? Why are we doing the Joint Land Use Study?" Well, it goes back to BRAC, Base Realignment and Enclosures. If you don't do a study to make your community compatible with your military operation and your training mission, there's a chance that the base, or the government could come down and say, "We're going to reduce the size of the base, we're going to reduce the size of the personnel, we're going to reduce the operation there." And you know what kind of economic engine Camp Lejeune is for Onslow County with their massive payroll. So that's why we're doing this, to find out ways that we can satisfy our citizens and protect our land use and also protect the training mission of the base. So that's basically what we were doing. Yes, sir.
Financial, two comments. First of all, Ben is to be commended for the fact that he has really focused the effort of both the city, the county, the base, the other municipalities. He's really done a good job, and I appreciate that. Just to remind the public though, from a financial standpoint, the federal government is paying 80% of the cost, and the other 20% of the city, county, and others are paying. How are we paying it? Through our work. So at the end of the day, we will have accomplished the requirement for a Joint Land Use Study, but physically with an F, we will not put in money. You will have put in physically with a P, the effort that covers the 20% match. And Ben and the Finance Department of the County, and as well as Ron and Gail with the city, have done a good job of documenting that. Obviously, Joe Ramirez and Tim McCurry from the base have done an excellent job. And as Ben said, at this point, we are working from a technical standpoint, and when both the county and the city staffs and the base staffs are ready, we will be briefing our elected officials so that when you finally get to the document, it's not, "Oh, I haven't ever seen this before." We need to do a lot of homework between now and June. But again, financially, it's through in-kind contribution and leadership. Ben's done a great job.
Thank you, sir.
I think Commissioner Bright said it, got it right on point there, that this is very important to Onslow County and Jacksonville, to make sure that we do maintain that balance of need there between our military partners and our civilian community. So this will go a long way, so.
Okay, I think we'll move on to item C, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Is that Mr. Anthony Prince?
Anthony.
Mr. Highway. I was going to say something else, Anthony, but I'm going to hold on.
I've been called worst. Good evening, everyone, or afternoon, I believe, still. And thank you for the opportunity to be here and represent the NPO. We've got several points to cover in the presentation, so we'll get to all of those. But first, for the benefit of our new commissioners and also for folks at home, just wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about what the NPO is and what we do. And then we'll get into what we're doing with prioritization, some projects that we've been able to fund recently, talk about some construction that's going to be happening within the next year or two. And then we'll also get to a recommendation that's come out of the TAC, meaning our Transportation Advisory Committee, to begin pursuing, potentially at least, or talking about, and expanding to our planning area boundary, to potentially align with the county boundary. So what is JUMPo? JUMPo stands for the Jacksonville Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Of course, that's just a lot of words really to say that we are the regional transportation planning organization for the Jacksonville area. We do multimodal planning, which includes, as Commissioner Bennett mentioned, highways, bike pad, transit, et cetera. But we also do what's known as programming. Programming is a process by which we work with state and federal agencies to determine what projects we're going to fund for implementation and when. And we'll get to that here just a little bit more in a few minutes. We're a federally mandated organization. We're also a federally funded organization, just like the JALIS. And really, the federal regulations say that if we don't do what we're supposed to be doing, then this area is in risk of losing federal investment for highways and various other forms of transportation investment. But we do an exceptional job. I think our TAC members would agree with that. And we've been very successful, and we'll talk about some of that success here in just a few minutes. Our operations are overseen by a five-member Transportation Advisory Committee. Four of those members are here with us today. Our chairman is Mr. Warden from the city council. Our vice chairman is Mr. Buchanan from the county commission. And our other members, Mr. Thomas from the city council, as well as Commissioner Bennett from the county commission. One thing to mention here is that North Carolina is very unique in the fact that we have NPOs, and of course, that's federally required, but we also have organizations outside of those metropolitan areas that are called RPOs. And so while the Jacksonville NPO doesn't extend to the full county boundary today, we have areas that are overseen and that are planned for by a rural planning organization that's actually based out of New York. And Commissioner Bennett and others have experience in working with the RPO. Prioritization, we spend a lot of time working with our state as well as our federal partners to prioritize and fund transportation projects. State statute dictates that we follow a two-year prioritization cycle. It also sets the particular steps. And it is a reoccurring cycle. And what I mean by that is, by the time we finish a prioritization cycle, we are always beginning the next cycle. So today, we're on step number five there, and I do see that I have actually two-step fives. So we'll call it the second step five, which is the one in red, where we finished all of our prioritization for that round. We've got what's called a transportation improvement program that we're looking to adopt to fund projects for the next 10 years. At the same time, we are also posturing ourselves to begin prioritization six, which is the sixth round of prioritization, with the development of new project ideas, engagement with the public on any concerns or issues that they have with their transportation system, and of course, you see the rest of the steps. Overall, what we're trying to do is to evaluate current priorities, to see if they still have merit. If they do, then they remain on the list. Other priorities may pop up and also be added to the list. But the intent, again, is to generate a program that adds to investment in our local transportation system. The current tip has about $300-some-odd million worth of investment over that 10-year period. And we've been very successful with the prioritization five evolution in adding new projects to the program. So here on the screen are just, is a list of just a few of those projects. Some of those are really high value, at least in my opinion, namely the Six Lane Western. We know what Western Boulevard is like today. Something that probably should have happened years ago, but it's now on the list for construction. Gum Branch Four Lane, it's another one that's sorely needed. Henderson Drive Four Lane. And just to clarify on that one, that's for the section between Gum Branch Road and Western Boulevard. So that's the current two- and three-lane section part of Henderson Drive. So again, we've been very successful in adding new projects to the TIP. But in addition to these, there are some 22, 23-odd other projects that remain on the tip for our area. And I'll show you a map of those here in just a few minutes. Unfortunately, one of the projects that was displaced off of the program was the 111 extension. This, in fact, is the highest priority for our organization, for the NPO, and it is one of the highest priorities for DOT. However, unfortunately, there just simply was not enough money in this round of prioritization to keep it on the list. Although it has fallen off for construction, we are going to continue to pursue the design as well as the environmental permitting of this project with the intent of hopefully bringing it back onto the TIP for construction very soon. In my perspective, it's not really a question of whether it will be funded, it's just a matter of when it will be funded. This is, in fact, one of the the highest priorities that we have. For those who may not be familiar, this is the additional crossing of the New River from 258 to Gum Branch Road. The intent is to connect 111 and Ramsey on either side of the New River there. So looking forward into 2019, we've got some construction that's planned to happen. Gum Branch and Western, that's a project that will begin very, very soon. You should see work starting within the next few weeks. I haven't been down to Sneets Ferry lately, but work should be getting on the 172 widening from the back gate back to 210. That's to improve that roadway to a three-lane section. And then you can see there's some other projects there as well that will be, that will begin in calendar year 2019. Looking forward a couple more years, 2020, 2021, see we've got some additional projects there. I believe the super street was discussed at the last county commissioners' meeting. We've also got improvements to Western and Marine, which have been needed for many years now. Make sure that we keep the traffic moving there. But all good improvements, value-added for our community. The two slides here really kind of represent the initial wave of investment that will happen in Jacksonville. Well, I should say in and around Jacksonville, I should be there. In 2022, 2023, four, five, and six, comes essentially a second wave of investment that comes with much larger projects than the simple widening projects that you see there on the screen. So we're talking about interchanges, grade separation with ramps, et cetera, at some of our major intersections. We're talking about roadways on new alignment, like Jacksonville Parkway, et cetera. So overall, you know, 10 years from now, 12 years from now, the way that we travel around, in and around Jacksonville is going to be different than the way it is today. It should be more efficient, and it should be much more safer. Federal regulations stipulate that the MPO boundary must contain what is considered the urbanized area for their particular location. The urbanized area is determined by the decennial census. It also says that you've got to contain what is seen to be the 20-year growth ring around that urbanization. So the intent there is not only to look at what congestion and issues you may have within the urbanized area, but also to look to the future, okay, so that we can anticipate some of those issues and hopefully resolve them in a proactive manner. So prior to 2010, you can see that the MPO boundary, which is shown there in green and red, pretty much hugged the boundary of the city of Jacksonville. There was some additional area included in there, but it was pretty close to the city limits itself. As the county has grown and as the needs have changed, so has the MPO boundary. In 2010, there was a demonstrated need for some additional planning down in the Sneets Ferry community. There was growing very rapidly, and so was the base. And there was a lot of pressure down there on the Four Corners area on 172 at the back gate. And so in 2010, we expanded the boundary to include pretty much all of Sneets Ferry, as well as Mainside, Camp Lejeune, and onto Onslow Beach. We also did some work for the Marine Corps there, working with traffic operations, signal timing, et cetera. So that's one of the main reasons that we made that expansion. For the commissioners who were on the board at that time, you probably recall that the MPO partnered with the county to do a Sneets Ferry community plan. And Ben, I know that you remember that very well. David, you probably do, too. The intent of that Sneets Ferry community plan was to look at the specific needs of that area and to come up with solutions. Not only from a roadway improvement perspective, but from a land use and a variety of other perspectives as well. The good news is, is that the results of that plan are actually being implemented now, particularly from a transportation perspective. The 172 widening that I mentioned before, as well as some other improvements that are scheduled on the TIP, will implement a lot of those recommendations and greatly improve the efficiency and the safety of travel in Sneets Ferry. Moving to 2012, again, I mentioned that the decennial census does somewhat shape the MPO planning area itself. And in 2012, we received the results of the 2010 census. Urbanization had grown in Onslow County since 2000, no question about that. And so, as a result, the MPO boundary also grew. You can see that it moved west towards Pender and Duplin County. It also moved towards southwest, towards Holly Ridge, down the 17th quarter there. And that's where the boundary currently sits. But if you overlay some of the areas in Onslow County that are unlikely to be developed in the near future, you can see that a majority of the developable area of Onslow County is already within the MPO So the question is, why expansion? Why does it make sense for us to even talk about this? And that's really where we are. There are no lines, hard lines set on this. It's really just a discussion. If there are any red flags, then we can certainly work through those. If there are any questions, we can do the work on those, too. But the TAC has talked about this for the better part of a year. And some of the reasons that we felt that it was important to bring this up is, first of all, because of the amount of success that the MPO has realized. I don't know if you can see it very well, but the orange lines on the map and the gray stars indicate individual transportation projects that have been funded. And those are projects that have just been funded over the past five to seven years. If you look outside of the MPO boundary, you can see that there are not very many of those projects at all. So I think that speaks volumes to the ability of the MPO to bring investment to the community. With that, given the level of investment that we're planning for, that we're getting ready to see in our urbanized core, the question is, do we want to continue that success in the future in support of regional connectivity? Not necessarily how we get to work and how we get to home, but how do we get to Raleigh? How do we get to Charlotte? How do we get to DC, et cetera? You know, these are economic development-related issues, as well as quality of life issues. Not saying that this is imminent, but this is something that could potentially happen. The Wilmington MPO is already in Pender County. And the census is very unpredictable. So one of the things, one of the potential outcomes could be a movement of Wilmington towards Onslow County. And that really boils down to representation. Now, why would we expand the boundary? Potentially because we would want our representation and our decision-making to be made from Jacksonville and Onslow County, rather than in Wilmington. And along with that, current representation in those gray areas, as well as the yellow areas, even though nobody really drives in there, comes from New Bern. And that's really complicated to explain to somebody when they come to a public meeting. And we do a lot of public meetings because that's part of our mission, is to talk to the public about projects, needs, expectations, et cetera. So when somebody comes to a meeting and they say, well, I have a Jacksonville address, or I'm from Richlands, or I'm from Swansboro, and you have to explain to them that even though you have that Jacksonville address, you're not within the Jacksonville planning area, you're going to have to call the RPO, our folks at the, our friends at the COG in New Bern. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem very logical to those folks when you have to explain it to them that way. And then, last but not least, resourcing. MPOs have, and probably always will be resourced at a higher level than RPOs. And that's really because of the federal support that we have. Just like we talked about with the Jayleys, 80% of our operating funds come from the federal government, and then the rest of the operating funds come from local contribution. Unfortunately, the RPOs are not staffed at that high of a level, and so they typically do not have the same level of technical expertise or a level of staffing to support transportation planning, project development. So the process, again, we're here just to talk, as I mentioned before. TAC felt that it was reasonable to bring this for conversation during the joint session. Of course, that's why we're here. Barring any red flags or any major concerns, our next step would be to go and talk to the municipalities about how they feel about potentially joining the MPO. If that is favorable, then potentially, we could come back to the city and the county to talk about a resolution of concurrence. That would allow us to, again, expand that MPO boundary to include all of Onslow County. The last step in the approval process is merely administrative, and that's to go back to DOT and Federal Highway and gain their concurrence as well. Impacts. If the MPO were to expand, that would force the RPO to retract from Onslow County, okay? So the entirety of Onslow County would be then covered by the MPO area. No financial change, really, to speak of at all. There would be no additional resources required from the city or the county to make this happen. However, with the expanded boundary, there is the potential that we could generate additional operating revenue with the next census, because the more people that you have in your, in your planning area, generally, the more resources are allocated by DOT and Federal Highway. I mentioned technical support before. That's something that would be enhanced in those expansion areas, as well as the ability to potentially compete for additional transportation funding. You saw the results on the previous slide. We would hope to continue that level of productivity in other areas if, in fact, the expansion were to occur. So really, that completes the bulk of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions or concerns that you may have about the boundary expansion, or about projects that are going on. And I'd also invite our TAC members to offer any insight that they may have as well.
Anthony, I have a question for the 258-53. Can you bring us up to speed on that?
The interchange?
Yeah.
It's a big project, to say the least. I believe the construction of that project has been delayed, I think it's by one year, putting it in, I think, 2024. I may have the numbers wrong on that. But the project is moving forward, and it's connected to the 258 super street that I mentioned earlier as well. Initially, we wanted both of those projects to go together so that you could have one contractor economies of scale, only impact the traveling public once. But the design and permitting process just didn't work out that way. Were there any specifics that you would like me to cover?
Basically, I've got a lot of questions on that.
It is moving forward. We have selected a design, and that design is being wrapped up now.
You might share the, our connection to either I-4 or I-95?
Yes, sir, that's the next slide.
A lot of people asking a lot of questions about that.
That's, that's great. That's great. Before I get to that, though, are there any other questions on the, on the MPO boundary? I know that's a lot to absorb in a short period of time.
Does that put us in a better position as far as getting funding? You said, is that, is that what you mentioned, as far as getting our projects approved?
Potentially, yes. I would say it does, especially for those areas that we're adding. The reason is, is because we compete at what they call a division level, and then a regional level, and then a statewide level, okay? So if we were to expand the boundary and to put the strategic value that the MPO has in what we do, I think we could compete better against folks like Wilmington and surrounding counties for additional funding in Onslow County.
It gives you a larger footprint for your regional projects. That would, in turn, as it falls down in scale, that should give you a larger ability to...
It certainly does give us a larger footprint. It puts those, in my opinion, better, puts those areas in a better standing to compete with other urbanized areas.
What's the impact to Swansboro, Holly Ridge, and Richmond's?
As far as financial impact, or?
Both, roadwise?
Well, from my perspective, and just, you know, outside looking in as to what they've been able to do so far, I think that we could provide a higher level of technical expertise to them. That would allow them to more strategically compete for projects. So for instance, right now, there's a project in Swansboro that's a super street for the entire length of Highway 24. I think that we could probably do a better job of parsing that out and creating smaller and more competitive projects to make them more appealing for funding, and also to advance them in the schedule. From a financial standpoint, at this point, there is no change.
I think it actually benefits them.
I think it would benefit them.
That would be my opinion.
Yeah, I think it actually benefits them.
They're not getting much of anything out of the RPO at this point, so anything they get would be beneficial to them.
And they're not going to go to the COG, so it's to their benefit that we sort of do the planning for them.
Well, you know, I always default back to representation, and where should it come from? I'm a firm believer that it should be local, you know, and New Bern is local enough, but New Bern is not Onslow County. And as the MPO boundary has kind of grown, the, the level of, what's the best word here? The attentiveness from the RPO to issues in Onslow County has probably changed.
One other thing we have, too, that wasn't mentioned, along with our local board members, is we do have a DOT representative that's from Jacksonville that sits on that board, and Sandra Fountain sat on it before. And Sandra Fountain brought us millions of dollars here. I could spend the rest of the afternoon talking about that, but we have had people on the MPO board that was from Wilmington or somewhere else that really wasn't what you say to hometown people. So with having those local folks on the MPO board here, appointed from the various governors, I think that's been a big plus for Onslow County, too, and the MPO here.
Well, there's a variety of reasons that we've been successful, and definitely having them on board with us has been, has been some of those reasons. We work very well in a collaborative manner, and our relationship with DOT is unparalleled. Same thing with Federal Highway. Relationships really help to advance the cause in this particular case, is what I've learned. And I think that also is one of the main reasons that we've been successful.
Anthony's not going to do this harm, but you're responsible for that. Your leadership in working with those two agencies is amazing. And then the 111 project, Mike Alford is our DOT rep, and Mike Alford says, we're going to keep the 111 on the table, and he's working hard for us to get that 111 project, because we need that. I know it's going to happen in the next maybe five to 10 years, but it'll have it happen. But Anthony's leadership is what's really done this for the MPO.
Thank you, sir.
Just a comment before Anthony came, we used a consultant as our MPO administrator. And really, we didn't really compete. They weren't really interested, I don't think, as much in Onslow County as having our own person. They were administered out of Raleigh. I think the consultant came out of the Raleigh area. Just to speak to the expansion, we compete with, with the Wilmington folks for projects. They're in our same, same region. And as Jack pointed out, whenever we have the representative on the state DOT board under, from Onslow County, we seem to do, do better, surprise, surprise. So we want to make sure that we continue to compete within our area against, successfully against Wilmington. And I think the expansion of the boundary will be one little thing or another little tool that'll help us compete a little more favorably. The only other comment I wanted to make was, you know, it is called the Jacksonville Urban, but as, as Jack and as Paul can attest, we look at Onslow County. We're, we don't, we don't just focus on Jacksonville. We look at Onslow County. And one of the things that we, we've been trying to help is, is trying to help the airport. Anthony mentioned multimodal. That's just a fancy way of saying there's different ways of getting around. You can drive, you can fly, you can bicycle, whatever you want to call it. But we're trying to help the expansion of the runway out there. And of course, that involves a road realignment of 111 to get around that end of the runway so that he can expand it. So we are very attentive and focused on improving Onslow County. We know that transportation is important to our economic development. If we can get goods out of here, or goods in, more efficiently, and it also will help us compete, we hope, continue to, as we try to attract new, new industries, new manufacturers, new companies, whatever, whatever the case may be, to Onslow County. So we mentioned that, Paul asked about an update on the interstate designation, and Anthony mentioned you were going to bring that up a little later in your discussion. It's a good, good little lead-off to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. If there are no other questions on the boundary expansion, we'll definitely go to that. So, two weeks ago, we had a kickoff meeting for a feasibility study that DOT is working on right now. And the intent of this feasibility study is to conceptualize an interstate-grade facility from Fayetteville to Jacksonville, largely along the NC-24 freeway, the NC-24 alignment, the current alignment. So, that is very huge for our community. It's something that we've been talking about for years now, that accessibility to the interstate system is a challenge for us. And in fact, I was reading the state freight report. It's the statewide freight plan that they have. They identified us specifically as an isolated area of the state because of our lack of interstate connectivity. This has legs for a variety of reasons. It makes sense from an economic development standpoint. It makes sense from a quality of life, military mobility standpoint, and DOT is actually running with this pretty hard right now, a lot of it because of Mike Alford, Mr. Alford, and his efforts on the DOT board. So, we just started the study. There are no outcomes at this point, but as the study progresses, we'll be sure to keep you in the loop on how that, on how it's going. Ultimately, this is not a five-year, 10-year, 20-year type of project, you know? It's not going to happen overnight. But the first step in this type of journey has to start somewhere, and the good news is that we're making it. Ultimately, if this does happen, this could be, this could mean a lot for Onslow County and eastern North Carolina in general.
Let me just make a couple of comments, if I could. First comment, Camp de June is the largest military base in the United States that doesn't have direct interstate access. Jacksonville, I believe, is the largest city in North Carolina that doesn't have direct interstate access.
That's correct.
So, they say everything has a silver lining. We got hit pretty dag on hard by Hurricane Florence. But actually, Hurricane Florence actually brought our interstate, a lack of interstate, a little bit, some publicity. When 40 shut down because of flooding, DOT routed 40 and 40 traffic through Jacksonville. And I think that opened the state DOT folks' eyes to the fact that they need more interstate connectivity down this way. And so, maybe some good will come of it. You know, it certainly cost our schools, our county, and our city government a lot of money, and our folks too. But hopefully, this has helped to raise the awareness that we need some more better roads into this area, and we think interstate is the way to go. And of course, the benefit is hopefully we'll get connected to two interstates, 40 and 95. And we've been searching for a good way to tie into 95. The obvious route for 40 was 24, but 95 looks like 24 is the best way to go with that also. So, I think it's accelerated it. I'm hoping it's not going to take 20 years. I'm hoping it's 10 years or less, but I don't think it's going to be a five-year program, but I'm hoping within 10 years, maybe. Cross my fingers.
Well, the conversation about the flooding from Florence was, there were such long stretches of I-40 that was underwater, that it would cost more to bring I-40 up to the level of above flood stage than it would be just to build another highway. Now, when that had come about, we don't know, but I think the state and Onslow County and eastern North Carolina are looking for another way, for another major route from west to east, and that's the best way I see right there.
Following the storm, all of the major highways to eastern North Carolina were completely inundated, so 74, 40, 95, 70, all of those major corridors that we used for every day for commerce and everything else, those were all inundated. Mr. Alford calls this the natural corridor, and it really is, because it was the most resilient corridor of all eastern North Carolina. And I can tell you personally, because I was out there helping to direct traffic with those traffic signals when there were thousands and thousands and thousands of cars trying to get down 24 onto 17, heading back into Wilmington, Pender County, et cetera. So, the fact that this showed itself as a natural corridor has increased the merit of what we're talking about. And I think the state is very serious about this. Hopefully, not 20 years. Practically, it may take us that long to get there, but again, at least we're talking about it. The last thing I'd like to plug is our website. If you're interested in any of the projects that I talked about, or if you ever have questions about traffic counts or travel conditions, et cetera, if you go to this website, it is very likely that you will find something of interest there.
It looks like the possibility of connecting the airport to 24 with four lanes. Did that score? Did that ever?
Widening 111 did score at one time. I believe what you're talking about was what we called Aviation Parkway, which was a new roadway that basically connected directly from the airport straight out to 258. The cost benefit on that project just simply wasn't there. I think it ended up being $65 million or something like that. However, we are still looking for solutions to that, because I think all of us would agree that getting to the airport right now can be challenging at times. In fact, I just experienced that on Sunday, getting behind a student driver on 111, trying to get to the airport on time. So, that's still a very high-level priority for us.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we need to move on now to downtown parking updates. Dr. Woodruff?
Good afternoon. We'll combine both of these. When you look at the downtown area, it's not a surprise that, thanks to the efforts of the county commission and the city council working together, we're beginning to develop a skyline. I mean, that's a pretty amazing building that y'all are going to be cutting the ribbon on, and the city's been very fortunate to have the investment that you've made in the downtown area. The waterfront is something that is an asset to our community. It's an asset that most people never see, because most of their activities are out on Western Boulevard or somewhere else. When people think of waterfront in Onslow County, I have to tell you, they really don't think about downtown Jacksonville. I want you to think back, though, just, what, six, seven years ago, when the city and the county worked together with the Fish and Wildlife to take down those five to seven dilapidated buildings that had stood there at your entrance for decades. And look what you have today. Saturday morning, I was out doing some activities, and I came past the fishing facility there, the boating facility, and there were 47 trailers. Now, I'm not sure whether those people just parked them there, or whether they launched their boat, or whether they were hoping that Santa Claus was going to put a boat on their trailer. I'm just saying, in the parking lot, were 47. That's helped the downtown economy. And it's also introduced a tremendous number of people to downtown Jacksonville. What you're doing with the courthouse is obviously something that introduces people to downtown also. While some are introduced through the judicial system of the police department and the sheriff's department, others are introduced through their civic responsibilities and jury duty. Again, this is the winner shot. Beautiful building. From a planning standpoint, y'all are really to be commended for implementing the facility. Here's one of the challenges, though, that the facility has: parking. We do have parking directly across the street at Ann, but there's really a shortage. If I ask you the question, in the downtown area, and let me get to that slide, here's your waterfront property that the city and the county currently own. On the right-hand side is the Popkin Bridge, the left-hand side is the Phillips Bridge, and you can see the USO. This was taken before your new facility was built. There are actually several parcels of property that the city and the county own. Starting over at the USO, the city owns two parcels of land, and then you, the county, own two parcels of land. And then, actually, you own a third parcel, because you've now taken the ownership of the historic house that's there. And you can see that while we have a boardwalk there, the vast majority of that property is used for parking. We did a study several years ago to identify values, and you can see in the color part, the blue belongs to the city, the green belongs to the county, and it's currently used for parking. Well, the assessments, the appraisals that were conducted, show that both the city and the county parcels are worth well over $800,000. Now, a good realtor, such as the vice chair, will tell you it's only worth $800,000 if somebody's willing to pay for it. But the reality is, our waterfront property in downtown is being utilized for parking. A former county commissioner once said, "Cars don't really care whether they have a waterfront view." You know? And I think Barbara Eichner was correct when she made that comment. One of the things that we want the city and the county commissioners to work on is to determine what do we want this property to actually become? It could continue as parking. It could become a waterfront park. It could be sold and have private development. I will say to you, from a planning standpoint, which is my background, to continue to utilize that property for parking is simply a status quo. If you want to move the investment which you have made as the county commission and the investment which the city council is making, if you want to move those investments forward, you have to seriously think about doing something with that property other than simply having it parking. When you look at parking, and this is the boundary that I've drawn, at the top is 17 or Marine. Obviously, the river is on the left side. The right side is Court Street, and the bottom is generally College. So, here's the test, and I didn't put these in slides, but I'm going to give you some numbers. How many total parking spaces do you think are in that yellow area? So, here are your three choices. A, 478. B, 671. C, over 900. How many people vote for A? How many people vote for B? How many people vote for C? Well, guess what? There are over 900 parking spaces in that area.
Wow.
Hard to believe. There are 629 public parking spaces and 339 private parking spaces, and you can see the total. Here's the problem: location. We live in a society where we join the gym, and we want to park at the closest parking space to the front door of the gym. People do not walk. When you put that into perspective of users, you have county employees, you have jurors, you have the general public. If you look and you use Tallman as the dividing line, just of the public spaces, 629 public spaces, 353 are between Tallman and Marine. The other 276 that are public are from Tallman down to College. Guess what? On a jury day, Mr. Chairman, how many of those spaces from Tallman down to College do you think are occupied?
Probably none.
Oh, no. Tallman down to College.
Oh, yeah, all of those.
All of those. Anybody like to take a guess that on a typical day in jury duty, how many of the spaces from Tallman up to Marine are occupied?
They're pretty full. I go by there a lot.
It's about 70%, but it's occupied by people who are working, not the jurors.
Correct.
It's also occupied, and this is not a negative comment, by the 30 or so vehicles which the sheriff's department stores there. The point we're making is, I don't know that there's a parking shortage in downtown. What there is, is a location issue of how you use those parking spaces, and the fact that we, as Americans, we are basically, pardon the bluntness, we're lazy. We don't like to walk. You go to Raleigh, and you park in a parking garage, and you may walk five or 10 minutes to get over to your visit to the senator or representative. But in Jacksonville, again, we're used to pulling up in front of the store, being able to see the front door, and if you can't see the front door from your parking space, you're not going to use it. And so, that's the challenge that we have. What we'd like to ask is that over the next several months, that we either reconvene the joint task force of redevelopment, where you had two county commissioners and two city council members working with the staff, or you direct the staff of the county and the city to work together on both of these issues. I believe they are directly tied together. If you do something with the waterfront property other than parking, it obviously is going to exacerbate the parking. And I know for the NC State fans, you understand what the word exacerbate means. That's what you did to Clemson this past week when you beat us at the buzzer. You exacerbated our frustration over not being able to play basketball. Well done, though, Mr. Woodruff. On the other hand, you know, we can leave it like it is. Money is tight, but I'll also say this: lack of planning means status quo. And I would strongly urge the city council and county commission today to either reactivate your redevelopment group downtown, Point 2 and 2, and let them work with the staffs, or direct the two staffs to work together. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to see the group brought back together. I think we did a lot when we had that group working, which Price is assigned to it, and I'm assigned to that now. We used to have Barbara Eichner and myself, and then I think, Mike, you were assigned to it, and Randy was.
Jerome.
Jerome was.
I don't have a problem. I was actually going to say that it was probably better to have the staff do it, and that way, say, it stays specifically focused on parking, and we don't get sidetracked into other issues that might come along. But, you know, you're talking about an ad hoc committee to do this, you know, something that's going to go away once the study is done, correct?
Correct.
I'd go either way.
Whatever way you want to do, Sammy. We need to do something.
I think it's easier for the staff to get together than it is to herd elected people into...
I think you'll get it done quicker with the staff going in.
If it's just pertaining to the parking, I would say that the staff obviously would be quicker, but one of the things that we sort of put in a drawer was all the work that we did in terms of other issues that are down there, which is realignment of Court Street and pedestrian walks and those things that we spent a lot of time working on. Would it be a good time with a new board to re-laborize those conversations? But we don't want to stagnate this conversation.
But I would keep them separate. I see what you're saying there. I think there is a need to still continue to look at downtown as far as economic development's concerned, and I think...
They were doing a great job.
That's what we were doing. And I think that's, I have no problem with that continuing.
To let the staff focus.
You're just going to do the drive, the parking? I would say the staff. But I thought you were looking at everything again.
Economic development.
Well, whichever way, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, it is going to come down to money. And I will tell you, as Gail and city council know, I love to spend money, but at the end of the day, it's the mayor and council's responsibility to figure out where I get that money. So, I'm certainly not opposed to getting the four elected back involved, because at the end of the day, some of the recommendations are going to be about money. But whether you do it with the staff, or whether you do it with the joint group and have it focused just on these two issues, the point is, it's not going to solve itself. So, we have to decide, is that a priority the city council and the county commission want to take on? If it is, then you pick option A, option B, but let's get on with it.
Well, one thing, too, Richard, and I hope I'm not saying anything out of tune here, but if we look at a park down there on the waterfront, then we have tourism money that can probably jump in, help out pretty much with a park. But if we go another route with a private venture, we won't be able to do any of that. But if we're looking at a park, whatever the staff come up with, and we have tourism money, we can pour into that, because that's what it would be.
Well, I'd say the counterpoint to that, though, would be if we go with a park, then we're keeping those lots off of our tax rules, though, whereas private development could put that sort of prime real estate on the tax rules in a meaningful way.
Well, and you also have to look at the camera regulations. Can it be, is there enough space for private development in terms of camera? Can it be, is there enough space for private development in terms of camera regulations, setbacks, parking, that sort of thing? And that's sort of what this board had those conversations about.
Because I believe, if I remember correctly, Richard, correct me, but there was a restaurant at one time, but they needed that parking space for the courthouse of that now, so that's probably gone away because there's not enough space for that restaurant to go there, and that's what happened before.
I think if the immediate need and a high priority is the parking, maybe we could recommend that staff would get together and do their research work on this, and once they're ready for some suggestions, we can reconvene the two parties, and then we'll move forward from there.
Yeah, I believe the expansion of the courthouse is going to put even bigger strain on the parking down there. There's no question. Certainly, we lost a bunch of parking spaces when they tore down the old sheriff's building there and so forth and so on anyway. So, I agree. I think that's a good compromise, and I'll make a motion we do that.
Second.
And your motion is that we let staff?
Let staff get to a certain point, and then go back to the group, to the two county commissioners, to two city council people that are on that downtown study, and give some input, and then bring to the both boards at that point.
Wouldn't, does the parking, wouldn't that fall under your TAC? For...
No. No, it's, no, not really. I mean, it can, it could, I guess. You know, we did the park and ride there at, over there at Commons, but...
And that may be part of the solution to the situation you got downtown.
Well, the only problem there is that, you know, the TAC has the state board representatives, so we're typically dealing with state and federal money. I don't think we're going to be dealing with anything except local money on this. So, I'd say let's just keep it within what we just talked about.
So, I guess this was out in the form of a motion, and there was a second, correct? Any other comments or discussion? You want to call it?
We can't. We can't have a, we...
It's got to be individual, okay?
You can do yours, or we...
He's got to make his own motion.
No, we can't make a motion.
Okay. Got you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you very much.
I think we advertise that we wouldn't be doing any action.
No, sir, you can get a consensus of the board, but you cannot take action.
I'd say move forward, along with the city.
I'd agree with that.
That's consensus on the board. Well, this has been a very good joint meeting. I think we've got a lot of issues out on the table that we haven't talked about, and we needed to talk about. Going to be a lot of things that we can do with the city, and a lot of things the city can do with us. The whole purpose for that is to try to do things together to save tax dollars, and I think if we can do that, that really serves its purpose. I do want to mention that during the hurricane, we had the Somerset Building that was totally destroyed as far as use, and we, through the cooperation of the city and Dr. Woodruff and the chief, we were able to use the city's facilities, the police department and the city hall, and the railroad depot at times, for having court. Other than that, we didn't have to pay for rent and lease of a building because we were obligated to provide courtroom space, so that saved us a ton of money. So, thank you to the city council for doing that and allowing us to do that. I think we're still going to be doing that. The Somerset Building is still in repair, but that was a big plus for us, and I thank you, Mayor and the council, for that.
We have one other announcement we'd like to make. There is an important meeting that the community is invited to this coming Wednesday at 6:00 PM. It's relative to broadband, and it's going to be at 6:00 PM at the youth center across the street from city hall. Any person who's interested in broadband in North Carolina, it's a regional meeting, and we hope the public will turn out.
Thank you. In closing, I would like to thank all the members of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners for meeting with us tonight. I want to let the public know that we work together very closely on a lot of different things. You've seen tonight's conversation. Chairman Wright and I have met on several occasions to discuss matters, but I think our working relationship has been exceptional as far as being able to get things done for the people that we serve. And I hope that we could continue dialogue. You know, it doesn't just have to be during a formal meeting, but, you know, you pick up the phone and give us a call, or vice versa. You know, it's good to share ideas and information. But again, thank you so much for the hospitality, and also the staff of Onslow County. Thank you.
Yeah, I want folks to remember that the people that live in the city are also county taxpayers also, so they contribute just as much as the people in the county does, and we just appreciate the opportunity to serve with the city and work together. With that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Council, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.